Finance and Housing Committee meeting today is July 20th, 2022. The time is 9:33 a.m. Madam Clerk, I will you please call the rule? I'm Teresa Mosqueta, Chair of the Committee. Will you please call the rule, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Herbold.
Excused.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Present.
Madam Chair, that is four present and one excuse.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I want to thank all of you who are joining us virtually here today. There's a few folks in person. We do have a full agenda for today. I want to think sure that I want to make sure that folks continue to monitor the COVID cases. We are now seeing hospitals at about 130, 135% capacity, which means that as reported out by the Washington Hospital Association and others, those who have other emergencies, maybe it's gunshot or maybe it's an acute health issue that's come up. Folks are being turned away because of the number of folks at the COVID crisis level. They're being asked to wait longer. And this means that COVID, which is entirely preventable with masks, with vaccinations, with social distancing, needs to continue to be adhered to. And I want to further emphasize the importance of the responsibility we all have to respond as if it was really COVID. Right now, rates are higher during at this level of variant than they were at any level with the Delta case, which was a very concerning number of exposures. So that's the reason we continue to do masking here. And that's the reason that I continue to encourage all of our participants, who would usually be at the table to join us virtually. I do want to make sure that we have public comment. And before we get into public comment, I'm going to summarize what's on our list. As you may note, we and Councilmember Lewis, I would invite you to speak to this as well. We do have one item that is not on our agenda. We were going to consider a resolution from Councilmember Lewis today related to, I'm going to just call it ethical supply chain. You can correct me, Councilmember Lewis, the appropriate title. It's not in my notes anymore, but we're going to hold that for our next meeting to make sure that we get a little bit more feedback and have a chance to work through some of the policy questions, but really appreciate the concept behind that. So today's agenda does include the FAS Columbia City snippet property disposition for briefing discussion and possible vote. Council Bill 120367, an ordinance accepting the gift of a Harvard Governance Performance Lab Fellow for briefing discussion and possible vote. We have two bills related to the supplemental budget. This includes Council Bill 120365, which is the supplemental budget, and Council Bill 120366, which is the grant acceptance ordinance. This will be for briefing discussion and possible vote. There are three amendments that I'm aware of, so we will see if we can get through all three. And if we have the ability to vote today, that would be excellent. And then lastly, we have cannabis equity. This is an item that we had three times, the beginning of this year, at least three times, and really appreciate the mayor's office for their participation in today's briefing and discussion on concepts related to cannabis equity and the research that they've been doing with their departments and also with community. Councilmember Lewis, is there anything else that you'd like to note about Resolution 32060, the Sustainable Procurement Resolution? We will have it on our agenda at another date, and apologies for the item being held over.
No, Councilmember Mosqueta, thank you for raising that. We're looking at how to reconcile that resolution with some of the existing city procurement policies. And whether that resolution is even necessary at this point to represent what the city's policy is. So we may be able to save the committee and the doc at some time based on continuing to look at what the implications of the resolution would be on current policy. So stay tuned for that, and we will see what that portends for the hearing in two weeks.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Lewis, for your work on that. And I know it's something at the state level you and I had been, I think, working in the halls of Olympia at the same time when there was a similar type of resolution related to state procurement. So appreciate you making sure that we are at least adhering to it, and if not, having something ready to go. If there's no objection, the items on the agenda will be adopted. If there is no objection, the items on the agenda are adopted. We're going to go ahead and go with public comment. And Madam Clerk, do we have the video teed up for today's presentation? Great, you will go ahead and this, excuse me, you will hear the video outlining the presentation for remote public comment and in-person public comment. We will take folks who are online first and then go to the folks in the room. And Madam Clerk, you can go ahead and tee that up now.
The city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, traditional territory of the coast sailors peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment. From residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue, that is your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You will then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when 10 seconds are left in your allotted time as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
Excellent. Thank you so very much. I am going to go ahead and actually go to some folks in the room. We have some folks from Black Excellence in Cannabis and Emerald City Collective. So we're going to go ahead and take folks in the room first in the following order. Peter Manning, Alex Zimmerman, and then Mike Assai. I hope I pronounced that right. And you have two minutes to speak. Welcome, Mr. Manning. And just before you begin, let me confirm that your microphone is on. And maybe the folks from IT or Seattle Channel can let us know if you want to do a quick mic check again.
Can you hear me?
There we go. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am with Black Excellence in Cannabis. I used to belong to a collective garden by the name of Bellis Light. We had a dispensary here in the city of Seattle in 2011 until 2016. We were forced to close as a result of David Mendoza and Ed Murray's enforcement. And you know, this, it was, I personally believe that it was an attack on all black-owned dispensaries. Because if you look at it, there's not one person, one organization that was, that is here today in the city of Seattle that is black-owned. And prior to Murray coming up with his policies in the state, there was 20 known dispensaries that were owned by blacks in this city. And it was beautiful. We had a, we had a way to provide for ourselves. There was, it, it, it was, there was no hassle. There was nothing there. It was beautiful. It was no problems. We didn't have a problem with the city. Then all of a sudden Murray came in and he just, with his draconian-type measures, cracked down on us. And as a result, now we have zero owned stores here in Seattle. And Seattle has to take some type of responsibility for that because if you read the newspaper articles, if you read just the blueprint on how it transpired, there was no way black people could have survived that with the onslaught of the city government here. This city government did that. And that is not fair to us. I had been fighting literally since 2014 until this current day to get inclusion here in the state of Washington. I've been, I've had articles posted in the Washington Post. I've been on Cairo 7. I, I am most definitely Black Excellence Cannabis as a structure here that you guys may know. I, I think we need to work on change. I think that you guys need to pull in those organizations, touch out, touch those people that were affected that have legitimate dispensaries and bring them back to the table and give them a way in to this cannabis industry in the city of Seattle. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and we will follow up with you. Next on the list is Alex Zimmerman.
Fucking idiot. Zihail, minority demnazi fascist, ma bandita and psychopath. My name, Alex Zimmerman. Oh, I'm sorry, you are again forgot to show my face, but that's okay. I want to speak about Agenda Number 10, about money, what is supposed to be accepted. I think this money need accept for us housing, you know what I mean? Because many people not have housing. I like you, Council Mosqueta, you couple your agotok, we need a 250,000 housing. I totally agree with you. But I don't totally confuse why you did for last couple year rent double of black, Latina, poor, out from city. So you were one size, you're talking about 250,000. From another size, you're talking about out from city, all minority and poor. Very nice principle you have. So my question right now, maybe you can something doing about this 25,000 apartment who empty in Seattle every year, year by year. Seattle Times print about this many times. How is this possible? Poor people go out, thousand people move out, you know what I mean? Seattle only for aristocrat, you don't do nothing, you only talking, talking, talking. How many year you need talking and talking and don't do nothing? Look price only for last year after Corona, price jumped by 50 percentage. I have this in court right now hearing. This exactly what is you did with minority, with poor. Seattle is a place for aristocrat who make hundred thousand dollars. How is this with people who make only 40,000 or 30,000 or senior citizen? Yeah, we need 250,000 housing, we need 250,000 housing. We need 250,000 housing. You repeat this for many year, but you're doing exactly opposite. So stand up Seattle freaking idiot, cleanse his dirty chamber.
And the next person is Mike Assai. Good morning, Mr. Assai.
Good morning, City, Seattle Council. My name is Mike Assai. I am with Emerald City Collective Gardens. We were the first downtown medical cannabis collective in 2010, as I can show you here. We were the second black owner in Washington State. I'm here today, and I understand, I found out about the mayor's social equity in cannabis, which is great, but it's late. And I understand Bruce Harrell just got here. I am a victim, I am one of the many victims of the former Ed Murray's counsel. This man here, former Mayor McGinn, as you can see here, was in support of medical cannabis. In 2011, he signed Ordinance Number 123661, which really solidified medical cannabis here in the city. It should have gave us a grandfather clause. As was stated before, former Mayor Ed Murray, along with many of his people, eradicated cannabis here in the city, and a lot of them were black-owned. We should have been grandfathered in. We've been closed for six years now. Myself, my family, my son has been deeply affected. There is zero black ownership in the city of Seattle. There is zero black ownership in King County. There is barely 1% in the state of Washington. The city of Seattle owes me and owes people like us reparations, reconciliation. It's been painful to see, it's been painful to deal with. We did nothing wrong. We were fully licensed. We paid our taxes. We were in compliance. We never had an issue with local enforcement, state enforcement, any enforcement whatsoever. Thank you for your time, and I hope that we can have something that's going to make a change and bring Emerald City Collectives back in the city of Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the number of folks that we have signed up for public testimony in the room, and really appreciate the comments we've heard. We talk a lot about reparations from the harmful effects of the war on drugs. We haven't heard so much about reparations from the harmful effects of policies that were just 10, 12 years ago. So thank you for bringing that up as we think about this item, which is going to be just for briefing to get today conceptual concept or conceptual presentation. So there'll be more opportunities to get into the weeds, pun intended. So with that, Madam Clerk, I don't see anybody on the list for online signup. Is there any additional people?
David Hines.
Oh, excuse me, David Hines, please go ahead. You do have two minutes, and we appreciate you hanging on here. And David, if you'd like to push star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Now I can hear you, David. Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, David Ains, District 7. We only legalize proper grown marijuana. We should have had police reform that better train the cops to focus on shutting down the crack meth and heroin. Yet for some reason, we have politicians who are going out of their way to codify unconstitutional treasonous laws that exempt evil drug pushers who are committing crimes against humanity, and they're listed low-level misdemeanor. Now, I call it in because the oversight on the budget dictates what the government invests in and does and the policies that it supports. And we've needed and expected the homeless crisis to be solved and the lack of capacity that has not really truly been put forth in a diligent, honest effort. And I'm asking council to reconsider their, I dare say, bad policy of redirecting all those American Rescue Plan dollars that were specifically earmarked to alleviate the oppression of people who are suffering a lack of, that's how we say, like, like, congregate shelter and proper interpretation of, like, living in a personal, private space that isn't overwhelmed by other people's customs violating spit spray, like, concerns. And yet, we don't have enough money or expertise to rapidly solve a homeless crisis that will not solve the homeless problem so much, but it will alleviate the unnecessary suffering of innocent people who are racially discriminated against by the policies that council created and the people that they pay within the nonprofits who are judging skin color and refusing to judge the character of a criminal. It's like, anyway, you all keep trying to censor the truth, and you're undermining our community. And this is a public service volunteer job that you think you're entitled to destroy our society. You don't have the proper policies, you don't have the proper, like, truth to alleviate the evil that is conducting uncivil war in my community in Pioneer Square every single night. And yet, you just kind of discount us, like, well, you don't have to put up with it.
Thank you, David. Okay, colleagues, that does conclude the number of folks who've signed up for public comment. We are going to now go ahead and move on to the items of business on our calendar. I'll go ahead and read in item number one. Item number one on our agenda is Council Bill 120371. This is the FAS Columbia City snippet property disposition. And we're going to have about 15 minutes for this. I want to welcome Karen Gruen and Charles Mason of the Office of Housing and Tracy Roskoff from Central Staff. And do we have everybody that we need in the Zoom? Let me just double-check here. I see Tracy and Karen and Charles. Okay, I think we're, we have a full lineup. Before I turn it over to Central Staff, I had to, to walk us through this, and then we'll turn it over to the Office of Housing. I wanted to note how excited I am about this piece of property. This is a small but important piece of legislation that will convey a small property snippet, but will have a large impact in helping create more affordable housing. This property transfer is completely in line with our surplus land policy, our land disposition policy, and follows the precedent established over the last several years. In 2019, we passed legislation to make sure that we are prioritizing city-owned land and city-light-owned property for affordable housing with an emphasis on community-driven projects and also pairing services with community and cultural spaces, childcare amenities, making sure that we are creating a space for folks as we also build housing for folks. And this was really intended to be a displacement mitigation strategy as well. This project by El Centro de la Raza fits that description to a T. It is cited in, excuse me, it is family-sized units, childcare space, a play area, community space for worship, and more. And since we passed the land disposition policy in 2018, several properties have been conveyed at no cost for affordable housing. This includes in the central area, in Finney Ridge, in Royal Heights. And this piece of property, you might look at it on the map when we take a chance to walk through it. You might think it looks much smaller than the previous properties, but it does allow for that precedent and helps us move forward at this amazing affordable housing project with space for childcare, a play area, and more. So this is a great example of how we're using every parcel, including this small piece of public property that would otherwise just sit there and turning it into land that can increase the number of affordable housing units and in addition to that, create a sense of place by building through the lens of El Centro, enabling the project to move forward and increase community ownership and anti-displacement strategies. So that is the background to a pretty wonky title for this legislation. And I'm really excited because this is one of the projects that is receiving an award from our Jumpstart Housing Fund. And we will be highlighting the full list of all of the affordable housing projects that received Jumpstart funding in 2022 on Thursday. There will be a press conference highlighting the full list for the first time, but this is one of those, so early preview. Madam, Madam Tracy Roskoff from Central Staff, I'd love to turn it over to you to provide additional context, and then we'll turn it over to the Office of Housing.
Councilmember, you've done, as always, a very good job of providing a good background information and context for this transaction. Just to add that one of the other changes we made to the dispensary policies was to say that if we were to sell properties and not transfer to affordable housing providers, that the proceeds from sale of city properties would go into the Low Income Housing Fund. And this legislation, in fact, proposes to do that very thing because we do have a portion of the property here that will be available for a market rate transaction or transfer in addition to the part that will go to El Centro de la Raza. And I'll let FAS folks and OH folks give you more details about the legislation and those pieces in particular.
Okay, thanks. Before we do that, I just want to signal for our folks at IT or for Seattle Channel, if we could toggle the image of the person speaking to the person in the Zoom who's doing the presentation, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much. And for folks at home who are wondering who that voice was, it was not mine. I do have my mask on. My mouth was not moving. That was Tracy Roskoff from, from Central Staff. Thanks for the overview, Tracy. So let's go ahead and turn it over to Karen and Charles from the Office of Housing. And thanks to Seattle Channel and our IT team for making sure that this virtual presentation is being projected. Please go ahead.
All right. Good, good morning, everyone. My name is Charles Mason from the Office of Housing. I'm a strategic advisor here, and I will let my colleague Karen from FAS introduce herself while I bring up the PowerPoint.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Karen Gruen. I'm with FAS and the Director of Real Estate Services and happy to partner with Charles on this transaction.
Wonderful, thank you. And I did get confirmation from folks that could see Tracy was just on my screen that we couldn't see her. So thanks so much for that update, everyone, and thanks, as always, to IT and Seattle Channel. Okay, please go ahead.
Morning. As I mentioned, I'm Charles Mason, a strategic advisor here from the Office of Housing. And my colleague Karen and I would like to talk about what we've been working on for the past couple of months related to a tiny parcel of land in Columbia City. So we wanted to zoom out and start with the bigger picture here. In 2021, OH, under its fall notice of funding availability round, awarded El Centro de la Raza approximately $11 million to create newly constructed affordable housing in Columbia City using source, local sources like Levy and like Councilmember Mosqueta mentioned, potentially Jumpstart funding for this project as well. The project will include 87 units, serving households earning from 30% to 50% to 60% of area meeting income. They'll have a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, as well as parking for the residents, childcare space, play areas, offices for Consejo Counseling, and a space for Columbia City Church of Hope, both organizations which currently occupy the site today. And so just to give a little more background of who we've been working with, we've been working with FAS as they are the property owner of the site. OH is our office as we are funding a portion of the development of the site. We've also been partnering with the City Attorney's Office in terms of guiding us through the process of disposing of this property and SDCI to ensure that this property can be included with the neighboring El Centro de la Raza property to be developed into affordable housing without delay. And of course, we've been working with El Centro de la Raza as the future nonprofit owner of the site and their development consultant, Beacon Development, as well as the neighboring property owner of the parcel to the north, who will be purchasing their portion of the parcel. Next, we'll give a little more context. This parcel site is located about a block and off of Rayner Avenue south on South Angeline. It's pretty diverse neighborhood, pretty transit-friendly area. And I will now pass it on to Karen to discuss some of the parcel specifics.
Thank you, Charles. And yes, just to talk a little bit about the specifics, this is a very small parcel. We call it a snippet here internally at the city. It's long and narrow, as you see on the slide. It is adjacent to some private property owners to the north and then to the area that El Centro de la Raza will be developing for housing to the south. It's approximately three to five feet wide and approximately 110 feet long. It is about 476 square feet. And you can see it on the map there, but it's going to be divided into two sections. The northern parcel would be sold to the adjacent private property owners, and the southern parcel will be transferred for the housing development project. Looking a little bit ahead at the timeline and just sharing that, we are working with council, hoping to have council authorize the transfer and the sale in July and August of this year. At the same time, we're working on the transfer agreement and the purchase and sale agreement. And then from now until October, we will work with Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections on the lap boundary adjustment that we need to do. We anticipate that the property would close, the transactions would close at the end of this year, 2022. In January of 2023, Office of Housing is planning on closing the loan. And then between January 2023 and into the third quarter of January 2020, I'm sorry, of 2024, we would have construction and then housing would open in the fall of 2024. So what we're doing today is beginning the process of seeking council authorization and asking for that action so that we can proceed. And we're happy to take any questions that council may have today of either Charles or myself. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So colleagues, I was going to maybe put it in front of us to then ask some questions. And I see Councilmember Nelson is up in the queue first, perhaps. Okay, let's go ahead and put it in front of us, and then we'll take some comments and questions. Colleagues, I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill 120371. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nelson. So let's get into any discussion, any comments or questions. Okay, I'm looking that way, looking this way. Okay, Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I'm very supportive of the project as presented to us today, and I had a comment and a question. Normally, I would prefer to see city-owned land provided to private entities or nonprofit corporations as a long-term lease, like a 99-year to private entities or nonprofit corporations as a long-term lease, like a ninety-nine-year lease for a dollar a year, just so we keep the land in the public, in the public ownership. Uh, in this case, though, looking at the map, um, it truly is a snippet of land. Uh, it it truly is not, it's not a traditional parcel. It's just a, as you, as you showed in your map with the blue boundary, it's really just uh, a little bit of that um, that sliver of land. So I I support uh, in this case, how you're um, uh, the disposition of this particular, these two particular items. But um, just didn't want you to think that that meant I didn't continue to want uh, most land to be transferred via ninety-nine-year lease, which which lenders view as as ownership, frankly. So that's my comment. A question I have is um, I, we, we don't have the benefit of having uh, the district council member on this particular committee, but has the Office of Housing, are you, do you know that the district council member, District Two supports this particular project? Uh, Councilmember Morales? Any projects in her district, so?
So I, I will say I I'm not aware um, if Councilmember Morales supports or does not support this project at the moment that is currently handled by other folks in the Office of OH. Uh, I would believe that, given some of the items and things that Councilmember Morales has mentioned and supported before, that she might support this, but I cannot speak to that directly.
Yeah, I know that all of us support building more low-income housing. I just, just as part of the typical due diligence, I I always would want to check in with the district council member. So I don't know if Central Staff is aware of that or not.
I'm not, but we certainly can um, draw this to the attention of Councilmember Morales, um, who I actually think is gonna be out, she's in town now, but I think is gonna be out of town next uh, week if this is gonna be in front of a full council. But we'll make sure she knows about the the legislation and the project.
Okay, great. But it looks, it looks great to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Peterson. And um, I'm not seeing any additional questions over here either and none online. So I'm gonna go ahead and take that as indication of support as well. I really want to thank you all um, for the work that you've done to really try to be flexible as we see additional organizations stepping up and stepping into the role of being developers to try to house uh, their community and prevent displacement. Uh, this is a great example of the flexibility that we were hoping for in the land disposition policies. And it's also a great pairing of existing city funds through Jumpstart and other funds to make sure that the vision of the community can actually come online. So really excited about this uh, moving forward and want to think as well, the Office of Housing team who really got the uh, funding for Jumpstart, uh, for example, out the door so quickly. And again, we'll be featuring that full list on Thursday in a press conference. We'll make sure to let everybody know that. But this is really an opportunity to celebrate Office of Housing as well as our Central Staff and uh, the folks on our team. Uh, Aaron House and Sage Alprey, notably working on housing and uh, the tax policy respectfully. Um, and our, our efforts to try to make sure that more funding gets out the door. So uh, it'll be fun. And this is great, too. We'll see El Centro on Thursday. If there's no additional comments or questions, I'm gonna go ahead and move this item, get in front of us. Um, oh, it already has been in front of us. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please call the role on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta?
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is for, for in favor, non-opposed.
Thank you so much. That is unanimous in our full committee today. So the motion carries and the committee recommendation that the bill passed will be sent to the July twenty-six Seattle City Council Meeting for a final vote. As you heard me say in full, um, excuse me, in council briefing the other day, I am not gonna be there. So thanks to Councilmember Lewis for stepping in and reporting on this item. We'll make sure that you get my lengthy notes, unfortunately. But it's a really exciting piece of legislation. So thanks for your support in reading that out. All right, colleagues, let's move into item number two on the record. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number two into the record?
Agenda item number two, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-six-seven, an ordinance of accepting the gift of the, of a Harvard Government Performance Lab Fellow for briefing, discussion and possible vote.
Okay, thanks so much. And I see Ally Panucci, Deputy Director from Central Staff, on the line here with us. This is an acceptance ordinance that was transmitted with the mid-year supplemental. This bill accepts an in-kind gift to allow Harvard Fellow, a Harvard Fellow, to work with Finance and Administrative Services in, and the Innovation Team on the city's procurement and contracting processes. Ooh, Councilmember Lewis, we may want to chat with this person. Uh, and this is a relatively easy bill considering how complicated budget bills can be. But Ally, would you like to speak to this for us and orient us to the in-kind gift we're about to receive here?
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Ally Panucci. I'm your Council Central Staff. Um, you mostly summed it up. I would just note, so this would be, again, an in-kind gift. This person would be a Harvard employee, employee paid by Harvard and would provide staff resources for the purposes of working with our Finance and Administrative Services Department and the Policy and Innovation Team in the City Budget Office to support the project focused on improving the city's procurement and contacting, contracting processes. I'll just note that this in-kind gift um, complements a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant um, acceptance that is included in the mid-year grant acceptance bill that we'll be discussing next from Bloomberg Philanthropies that's split between FAS and CBO. And so together, those resources plus this fellow will support this ongoing project.
Okay, is there any additional questions? Um, I have one question for you. Uh, have we confirmed that this fellow will be receiving uh, compensation and benefits in line with the city's standards?
Uh, thank you, Chair Mosqueta, for the question. Um, we ha, I have confirmed that Harvard does pay their employees. The starting uh, pay for fellows in this program is about eighty-five thousand dollars plus benefits. Um, so they will be compensated. And we did look at some comparative positions in the city and it is consistent with sort of the mid, midpoint, starting point for several, several um, uh, positions that I think would be similar to the work that this person would be doing.
Excellent. That's great. Thanks for looking into that proactively and sure you knew that our office would be interested in that. Um, I think that that summarizes it. I don't see any hands on the screen or in person. So I move the committee somewhere, I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill one-two-zero-three-six-seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Nelson. Thank you very much. Um, you need to show comments or questions. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta?
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is for in favor, non-opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion carries and the committee recommendation that the bill pass will be sent to the July twenty-six Seattle City Council Meeting as well. We're moving right along. Ally, I'm sure that that makes you happy because we have a lot to discuss on the supplemental budget. Madam Clerk, could you please read items number three and four into the record?
Agenda item number three, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-six-five. And agenda number four, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-six-six, an ordinance amending, I'm sorry, an ordinance authorizing twenty-two acceptance of funding from non-city sources. And then ordinance amending ordinance one-two-six-four-nine-zero, which adopted the twenty-two budget, including the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-seven capital improvement program for briefing, discussion and possible vote.
Thank you very much, Fadi. So we have items three and four in front of us, the supplemental budget and the grant acceptance ordinance. Um, Ally Panucci, Deputy Director at Central Staff and Tom Mikesel, our lead on everything finance and budgeting, uh, is here with us. So um, uh, let's go ahead and walk through both of these presentations. I'm going to uh, make sure that we have a lot of time for questions and there, there are a few amendments that we'll walk through as well. Uh, you will recall, colleagues, that last year, one of the budget changes that I made as chair was to move away from the quarterly supplemental and gra, grant acceptance ordinances. It made no sense to pass budgets um, four times a year trying to amend our, our one-year calendar year budget. So what we've done instead is move to a mid-year supplemental that allows for us to truly attempt to get at a yearly budgeting and then have one supplemental. This year, we have a pretty volatile budget situation, I would say. There is high inflation, COVID variants. There is uh, the Russian attack in Ukraine. There is a lot of uncertainty in terms of whether or not there's going to be another recession on the horizon. And as we've teed up, there's going to be the possibility of tough discussions and detailed scrutiny of the budget. We will know more, we will know much more a month from now when the August revenue forecast comes together and three things happen. We've asked for a full accounting from the City Budgets Office of any underspend from the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two. We've asked for a full list of any of the federal and state dollars that were passed through the state legislature earlier this year and also the federal dollars that are um, going to go to our region via the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act and some other federal activities. And we've also asked for a full accounting of any of po, any possible general fund revenue adjacent streams that might have some flexibility. And there is a few in there, not just one. Um, so we don't want to go to those general fund revenue adjacent streams or take any um, actions to decrease services until we see those full pictures. The revenue forecast, the underspend from last year and any additional state and federal dollars that might be available to our, our residents. And so with that, um, this effort that we have today is really about making sure that we are moving forward with a supplemental budget and ensuring that we have strong oversight over the budget. As usual, I re, I strongly recommend and welcome any council members who are not part of this committee to go ahead and engage during the supplemental budget process. And some council members who are not onto, on our committee in finance and housing have offered some amendments. We are happy to bring those forward for the purposes of discussion and to make sure that everybody's voice is heard in these conversations as we consider the supplemental. But I just wanted to again lift up for folks that this is just the supplemental for the latter half of this year and the broader conversation, the picture we've been painting about the issues on the horizon. More information will be known about that in a month from now as we get the fuller picture from the revenue forecast and those other revenue streams that I mentioned. Tom and Ally, thanks for the work that you've done on the supplemental budget. We have your memo. Really appreciate the memo outlining changes in the supplemental and grant acceptance ordinance. And I'll turn it over to you uh, to uh, walk us through the items in front of us.
Uh, thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I am going to share my screen with a presentation that was not posted to the agenda but does just reflect information that is outlined in the memo. This is just for uh, ease of guiding the conversation today. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom to walk you through the discussion today.
Thank you, Deputy Deputy Director Panucci. Good morning, uh, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Tom Mikesel with your Central Staff. Um, this morning, um, building off the chair's introduction of what we're talking about today, we are um, discussing specifically Council Bills one-two-zero-three-six-five, the mid-year grant acceptance ordinance and Council Bill one-two-zero-three-six-six, um, which is uh, some uh, adjusting the two thousand and twenty adopted budget through supplemental changes. Um, as uh, as Ally, uh, direct, Deputy Director Panucci mentioned, there is a staff memo uh, that has been made available. Um, this presentation is really uh, pulling out the high points from that memo. Um, we'll reference back to the memo um, a, as, as I'm able um, for, for further detail. Um, though, also welcome any questions about um, that are, that I don't touch in the presentation that are in the memo and further, any additional items that are within the bill um, that are not, that are not specifically mentioned in either place. Um, so if, if referring to page one of the memo, one of the um, steps that staff is endeavoring to do is do a consistent tracking of the budget changes that are brought um, to council and to the Finance and Housing Committee during the year. Um, earlier in the year, uh, the committee and council received a carry-forward legislation um, from the executive. Um, and also uh, subsequent to that meeting, there have been additional pieces of legislation. Uh, I total, I count nine um, in total. Uh, they are detailed on page one of the staff memo. I'm not gonna cover those today um, in the interest of time. However, this table on this slide um, shows you the um, the, the size of the change of adjustments that have been considered uh, through uh, fifteenth of July. Um, so in total, the general fund adjustments, including uh, carryforwards and other legislation passed to date, um, indicates a twelve percent change to the general fund budget. Um, bringing a revised budget of one point, uh, approximately one point eight billion dollars in terms of other funds. So these are all the other city funds that um, provide services across the city. Um, it's a total increase of thirty-four percent, bringing the revised budget to seven-point-five billion dollars. Um, for a total revised city budget of nine-point-two billion dollars, which is a twenty-nine percent overall increase. Um, in reference to the specific bills, if we could look at the uh, the next slide, I'm, I'm sort of gonna take these in reverse order and discuss the, the supplemental budget changes and then follow, um, follow with the grant acceptance. Um, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-six-six is the second comprehensive budget adjustment. So when I say comprehensive, it's, it's meaning that it's all encompassing. Um, we're uh, covering requests from the, the array of city departments across the city um, with many, many different detailed changes included. Um, and also referencing back to the, the state uh, law uh, that provides authority for this type of change to an adopted budget. So this uh, city is allowed or is permitted to make mid-year appropriation changes to positions, capital budgets and operating budgets for items and needs that are assumed to have been unforeseeable when the two thousand and twenty-two budget was adopted. So that is the, the legislative authority provided for this type of the change. In terms of the bill itself, um, and the, the magnitude of the, the change that is contemplated that would be approved with adoption of this bill, it would, it would actually decrease the city budget by a total of a hundred and twenty-nine billion dollars. However, one um, key point to make in considering that number is that a, a very sizable portion of technical budget adjustments are included in this bill. In total, two-hundred-and-twenty-two million dollars of appropriation reductions are included that essentially constitute uh, abandonment of capital appropriations and some grants that, for which the work has been performed and there is no, um, no cash behind them. And it's essentially the department saying they, they can, um, they can fulfill their objectives for the year without having that budget authority. So it's, it's really a technical adjustment. The uh, the detail on that is discussed on page two of the memo. Um, and after netting that out, you can see that the uh, the supplemental budget uh, request would increase the budget by a total of ninety-three-point-four billion dollars. I'm building off of the chair's comments about the dynamic budget situation and, and all, and further um, on prior presentations to committee with regards to the general fund financial status, which indicated a hundred and seventeen million dollar projected uh, difference between revenues and expenditures in the, in the next year's budget to provide current services. It's really a focus of what, what this bill does to the general fund that, that next few slides of the presentation will cover. Um, of the ninety-three-point-four million dollars, the general fund would increase by approximately fifty-four-point-six million dollars. And I, I realized as I said, that nu, that number, that it was a typo. It's actually fifty-two-point-six. So um, that is, that is a mistake that um, it's correct in the memo, but the presentation does not follow quarterly. This slide shows the detailed items of that fifty, fifty-two-point-six million dollar proposed change. Uh, and in the interest of understanding how it impacts the general fund, given the um, the, the financial situation that has been described, um, showing how it's, how it's paid for and what the, um, what the various funding sources are within the general fund. The first and largest change in the general fund is actually a replenishment of the city's Revenue Stabilization Fund, also referred to as the rainy day fund, which is essentially a um, a, a resource that is held for, for instances where due to adverse economic situations, forecasted revenues do not meet budget in the general fund. So it provides, it provides essentially um, some financial support in the event of a, a future problematic economic situation. So when, when it's raining, the fund is available to, to provide an umbrella, for lack of a better, lack of a better word. The, during the COVID pandemic, um, in twenty, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the uh, the city budget relied on resources from the rainy day fund to, to meet, um, meet budget objectives in those years. Um, bringing the, the fund down to about six million dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the two thousand and twenty-two budget was programmed to uh, start replenishing that rainy day fund as the economy began to recover, um, with approximately fifteen-point-four million dollars budgeted for two thousand and twenty-two to start that replenishment uh, plan. Uh, as covered at the May fourth presentation to Finance and Housing Committee, uh, there was a fairly sizable year-end ending balance from last year's activity. So expenditures that were lower than the budget projections and revenues that came in higher than forecast. The, the total unreserved general fund ending balance that carried into this year, two thousand and twenty-two, was about a hundred and twenty million dollars. The the total un- unreserved general fund ending balance that carried into this year twenty twenty-two was about a hundred and twenty million dollars. Um, ordinance one, two, three, seven, four, three, and these details are covered at the bottom of page two of the memo. Um, that ordinance, which established the fiscal policies for the the uh rainy day fund or the revenue stabilization fund, indicate that in in times when unreserved ending balances are available, um fifty percent of that amount should shall go by ordinance to the replenish the rainy day fund. Uh, given that there is a hundred and twenty million dollars available, that indicates that on the order of fifty uh that uh really on the order of sixty million dollars could go to the fund. However, to fully replenish the fund, only a total of fifty, approximately fifty-four million dollars is necessary to replenish the fund to its full uh maximum funding level in in twenty twenty-two. So in in this table here, uh, there is a line which is forty point three million dollars, which is paid for from that prior year ending balance. And um and adjusts for the fact that the budget already included fifteen point four million dollars for a rainy day transfer. So this is the most sizable item from the general fund. It's funded from um prior year ending balance. That this assumption was included in the financial projections that were discussed at committee and made forth. So there's no impact to the bottom line numbers um that that were shared at that time. Um, so there is, there's generally a no net impact from this to the general fund. Tracking back to those projections from May fourth, but there is a a positive impact to the rainy day fund indicating that going into uncertain economic territory, the rainy day fund, it will be fully replenished with this action. Uh, the next item that I that I will cover is frontline worker pay. And this is uh covered on the top of page three of the memo. There was uh ordinance one, two, six, five, four, five, three authorized the mayor to enter into agreements with collective bargaining agreements, including the Coalition of City Unions, um Fire Local Twenty-seven and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Seventy-seven, which covered vaccination requirements and also provided uh one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar one-time payment prorated for whether a worker is uh full-time or part-time. Um, for any worker that was um with the city providing service onsite uh for March twentieth twenty twenty through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. Um, an additional criteria was that the individual um receiving the payment would have been on the city's payroll as of August first twenty twenty-one. So that agreement was entered into with the uh the bargaining units. Uh, this this appropriation here provides five point nine million dollars from the general fund to pay make those payments. Um, there is also a another piece um that was covered uh later in the memo, which is all the other city funds. So City Life Fund, IT Fund, uh Finance Administrative Services Fund, any any fund that had staff during those time periods for which there is a a payment that is due. Um, the total amount of the frontline worker uh payment is nine point four million dollars. What you see here on this table is just the general fund piece. Um, also referencing back to the May fourth presentation, um this amount is part of the planning reserve. So this is an executive managed um non- non-appropriated account um for where uh they uh they reserve funds for potential future liabilities, um covering labor contracts and other and other items. Um, so the those monies were in essence set aside for this purpose. And again, there is no impact um to the the estimated um financial uh situation for twenty twenty-three as a result of this action, given that the money was held in reserve. Similarly, uh but the the bill would appropriate two point five million dollars to the finance general budget, which is a a holding account in the general fund for to to reserve funds for future purposes as they become um become more real. Um, this is essentially providing uh two point five million dollars to pay for parking citations that were issued in twenty twenty-one um by and by uh enforcement officers who um perhaps did not have the correct commission at that time to issue those tickets. So this is a twenty twenty-one obligation, uh and it's uh similar to frontline worker pay was held in the planning reserves managed by the executive um for that potential liability. Uh, the next item is three point nine million dollars. And so this touches on the uh Council Bill one, two, zero, three, six, five, which I'll I'll cover next. Um, it's basically the appropriation side for three point nine million dollars of grants that uh the city would accept it would would accept um from external uh external entities. Um, largest item in this group is two point two seven uh two point two seven million dollar grant from the Washington Association of Sheriffs um for internet internet crimes against children task force, uh providing funding for salary and benefits for the deputy prosecuting attorney, overtime for detectives um and and basic um elements within SPD and and the city attorney's office to to staff that task force. And this is a as a re- a regular grant that the city receives um and is consistent with those past acceptances. Uh, also, there's six hundred thousand dollars from Washington State Department of Transportation to OPCD for a public engagement process focused around reconnecting the South Park neighborhood, which is can uh currently divided by state route ninety-nine. The money provided from WashDOT would uh would fund a plan produced by OPCD, which would be presented by the count uh presented to the council and WashDOT um about how to um effectuate that connection of the South Park neighborhood. Um, that report would be due January first of twenty twenty-five. And those are the the largest items within that uh within that grouping. Next item is actually uh reductions. So these are, this is places where um there are budget reductions and to to basically free up two point seven million dollars of general fund cash that is used for other items. And actually, I guess I've talked about the other the proposals. I'll talk about the the ads first and then the reduction second. Um, the two point seven million dollars is across several items. The largest one is a one point one million dollar increase in insurance costs um paid from the general fund. Um, this is essentially taking our insurance bill from the general fund to thirteen point three million dollars for this year, which is an eight point seven percent increase um to insurance premiums. Um, on those, and those premium increases are largely focused in our our property and liability lines of business. Uh, there's also a five hundred thousand dollar increase in this other proposal um line, the two point seven million dollars that would provide funding to the Human Services Department or HSD for the development of a community health facility. Uh, this item was actually added in the twenty twenty-one supplemental. However, it was not carried forward uh by the department. Um, and this essentially bring pulls that money back in to play in the budget. Um, and it it is intended to be combined with uh one million dollars of general fund monies in the department that was added by a council budget action in in the last year's budget adoption process. Um, essentially, this provides money for the A-Pace Funding Facility, totaling one point five million dollars. Uh, this is, all these items are detailed at the top of page four of the memo. I'll find uh next, the uh two point seven million dollars includes a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase to HSD um to expand access to reproductive healthcare through an enhanced investment in the Northwest Abortion Access Fund. And then finally, um smaller item is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase to Seattle Center um for winter premium pay um during the um winter season in December and January of this past year. Um, basically for workers who were who were onsite during those time periods. And then finally, a- as I mentioned, there are two point seven million dollars worth of reductions that provide um the the funding offset for the the additions that I just detailed. Um, largest one of those is a one point six million dollar uh reduction for items that were budgeted in twenty twenty-two from the general fund to the uh Department of Education and Early Learning. Uh, the items are detailed on page four of the memo. They include five hundred thousand dollars for mental health services in schools. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for um enhancement of restorative justice programming, five hundred thousand dollars for cultural responsive after-school programming. And then uh three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for programming for black girls and young women and black queer and transgender. Uh, so that totals one point one six mil- one point six million dollars. And um as I mentioned, this was in the budget, a budget from the general fund. This proposal would shift those uh those programs and services to the the family education and preschool promise levy, the FEP levy that is administered by Deal. Um, and essentially, these would then be paid for from the FEP levy using balances in that fund. Uh, and I would note um that it was indicated by the executive that the funding shift was endorsed by the FEP Levy Oversight Committee. And then finally, um in terms of large changes um in large reductions, there's a seven hundred and eleven thousand dollar um combined reduction um to programs that were um originally appropriated from the coronavirus relief fund monies in the general fund um that we have fully obligated and fully spent the cor- coronavirus relief fund monies. Um, so these appropriations uh are essentially unnecessary um to complete those those programs at this time. So all told, um, the total is fifty-two point six million dollars. Um, all of these items are either paid for through um prior year ending balances, reduction of of managed planning reserves uh or grants, grants accepted in in uh Council Bill one, two, oh, three, six, five, or offsetting reductions. So um it's it's essentially keep static the the general fund projection um that we uh discussed in it in May fourth. So I will pause right there just to see if there are any questions. I um that covers the the supplemental um focus. Um, the next uh topic I would discuss is actually the grant bill. So I'll just pause and see if there are any questions.
Okay, thanks. So we are on Council Bill one, two, zero, three, six, six, correct, the supplemental.
Right.
Um, I see one comment from Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Peterson, uh please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Muscata. I I do want to compliment the City Budget Office for their crafting of this mid-year supplemental ordinance. Um, also, Central Staff for doing a terrific job uh breaking it down and building it back and then pointing out things that are would be important to the City Council in making uh its decision on whether to amend or approve this supplemental. Uh, I'm generally supportive of the mid-year supplemental and and the amendments that I see before us today. I do have a couple of questions about the two departments that are in my committee. Um, Seattle Department of Transportation, Seattle Public Utilities. Uh, for um Seattle Department of Transportation, in one of the attachments, uh it talks about amendments to the capital improvement program. And it's a attachment, it's a it's an attachment A. And uh there is a page there that talks about bridge seismic phase three. So that is um for everybody in that capital improvement attachment, uh it's the second of sixteen pages that are that have minor changes that are tracked in there. And it looks like it's saying that um the last sentence, sixteen bridges are part of the current phase of the program, which is funded by the levy to move Seattle. And then the e- executives proposing to change that to strike sixteen and put eleven. And I think for the public and just to keep track of what's what's actually happening here is that sixteen bridges were still were originally part of the current phase of the program, but it has been amended to eleven. And I think that's really important to just not wipe away or forget the sixteen that that were promised and to just be more specific. So I'm sorry, I'm noticing this right now. I was so focused on the dollar amounts that I didn't notice this word change. And so I may later make a a voice amendment to just add a few words to this so that there's context that it's sixteen bridges were part of the this phase of the program, uh but it's been amended in twenty twenty-two to eleven bridges. And then the second uh item.
Just on that point, Councilmember Peterson, uh if you are interested in a um verbal amendment to clarify for the record, um if you don't mind, as we have this discussion, maybe just uh confirming with Central Staff the language and then we'll work with uh our clerk and Amelia um to make sure that we get that done before we leave committee today.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. And so the other item is Seattle Public Utilities. The one of the largest dollar amount changes in the mid-year supplemental is Seattle Public Utilities revising uh capital dollars that they need for their projects. And um the term used is abandon. And so I was just hoping in your memo uh on, in your memo, you talk about SPU no longer needing the funds. Could you just for the viewing public and get on the record here, how Seattle Public Utilities uh works on their capital improvement program? And then they're they're not actually giving up a hundred and eighty-eight million dollars, but it's just how they they account for it.
Yes, that's fine, Peterson. Thank you for the question. So I understand um from the uh analysts who staff Seattle Public Utilities in our conversation about this specific change, um Seattle Public Utilities uh actually appropriates the full amount of their capital need um in each budget. And so um and which is somewhat different than how other departments manage. Um, if you were reference back to earlier um meetings of the Finance and Housing Committee, we discussed the discussions around the carry forward legislation. There was a significant amount of automatic carry forward. And um a portion of which is was capital appropriations for Seattle Public Utilities. So essentially, because they they fully appropriate what their capital need is for twenty twenty-two, and then there's an automatic carry forward um from prior year, which is a consistent process for all city departments. Um, what they what they're essentially would be left with is a double count of their capital need for twenty twenty-two, given given the approach that they take to capital budgeting. So this um this change in this bill essentially um removes the automatic carry forward piece so that they are basically um placing their their capital budget appropriation for twenty twenty-two consistent with their need and 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 wipes away the the carry forward amount. And again, it's just that it's just a different approach to capital um capital appropriations. But it's it's technically technically accurate and um and that's and that's essentially what's going on with that large change.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, Councilmember Peterson? Okay, additional comments or questions? I do have a comment that I'd like to read into the record on behalf of Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Herbold is excused today, but she did want to note for Council Bill one, two, zero, three, six, six. She wanted to highlight the inclusion of uh a quarter million dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the supplemental budget legislation to the Human Services Department to expand access to reproductive healthcare through the Northwest Abortion Access Fund. The Gut Matter Institute predicts that with the disastrous overturn of Roe v. Wade, Washington State could see a three hundred and eighty-five percent increase in patients from out of state seeking reproductive care here. This is enough to flood clinics across the state, including right here in the city of Seattle. Meanwhile, a recent poll showed not just strong support for abortion access here and also found that sixty-two percent of Washington residents support efforts to help people from other states receive abortion access here in our state. This is exactly what these funds will do. In May, the Seattle City Council passed a resolution call that called for adding funding to support abortion access this year. After consulting with abortion access advocates and public health, Councilmember Herbold offered an amendment to direct those dollars to the Northwest Abortion Access Fund, which provides logistical support, care and safety for people seeking abortions here in Seattle from out of state. Councilmember Herbold notes, and I'll quote from him, "I thank Councilmember Hale for answering council's call by including two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Northwest Abortion Access Fund in the supplemental budget legislation transmitted to council. I call on my colleagues to swiftly approve this legislation with the full two hundred and fifty thousand dollars included." Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold, for your comments, and I agree. Seeing no additional comments, either online or in person, uh I'm gonna go ahead and mo- oh, excuse me. Excuse me, Tom. Do you mind if we take action on this um separate from the other bill and get this forward? Or do we need to do them together?
Uh, Chair Muscata, if I might jump in here, um it's fine to take them up separately, but the three amendments are related to this bill. And we, so we can, we can skip ahead to those slides if you want to take up those amendments first, but you'd want to consider the amendments before you move uh take a final vote on the the mid-year supplemental bill.
Okay, why don't we just go ahead and brief the other one? I want to double check um my notes as well. So let's go ahead and brief the um Grant Acceptance Ordinance, please.
Thank you. Uh, so Council Bill one, two, zero, three, six, five would be the first comprehensive grant acceptance um bill for this year. It would au- actually authorize uh city departments to accept approximately sixty-seven point six million dollars from external sources. Uh, so of the total amount, eighty percent is from the Washington State Department of Social and Human Services for an array of DA of um HSD programs. Uh, I I would note there's a a technical um consideration in this acceptance, and that is that approximately half of the grants that would be accepted. Of the grants that would be accepted into HSD have been already appropriated in the twenty twenty-two adopted budget. The appropriation authority for the grants. For the second half of the grants would actually be requested in the supplemental bill that we previously discussed. This is a new approach that is spearheaded by CBO, FAS and HSD. And I just want to point that out since it is a new approach that they're taking with regards to accepting the grants. I would note that staff has reviewed these various acceptances and did not flag any items of concern. For the things that were accepted or that would be accepted if with passage of one two zero three six five. And that, I believe, it's covers my comments that the memo provides a bit more detail on some of the individual grants on pages. Pages six through six through eight, including a full table of the grant acceptances by department. Which is a summary of the individual grant acceptances that are included in the summary attachment A to the ordinance.
Okay.
So that's that concludes the both discussions of both bills and the next with regard to the amendments to Council Bill one two oh three six six.
Got it. Okay, I apologize, folks. So I was looking ahead at the slide. So the mid-year grant acceptance ends in six six. The supplemental budget bill ends in six five. I'm back oriented, no, the other way, Tom?
Oh, wait, no, apologies.
Okay, that's okay. So just for the purposes of making sure that we have amendments to the right bill. The let's do this in chronological order. The supplemental budget bill ends in six five. Thumbs up?
Apologies, Councilmember. The the grant bill is is three is three six five. The supplemental is three six six. So that is a tight goal on that.
That's okay. Got it. Okay, so. Grant acceptance is three six five.
But that's correct, Chair Moskata. And if you wanted to, there are no proposed amendments to the grant acceptance bill. So you could go ahead and move and take action on that bill, and then we could discuss the amendments to Council Bill one two zero three six six. The mid-year supplemental budget ordinance.
Okay, we'll go ahead and I'm just gonna keep them in order in which they are on my my script here, which is thirty-six five. Which is the grant acceptance ordinance. Are there any additional comments or questions on grant acceptance ordinance, which is Council Bill one two zero three six five? Seeing none, I'm gonna move it in front of us. I move the council committee recommends passage of Council Bill. One two zero three six five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant acceptance order, a grant acceptance bill, Council Bill one two zero three six five. Are there any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the role on the grant acceptance ordinance, one two zero three six five. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Moskata.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is four in favor and none opposed. Thank you very much. The motion carries and the grant acceptance ordinance Council Bill one two zero three six five. It is advanced to full council, where Councilmember Lewis will thankfully pull this in front of the full council with a recommendation to pass. All right, let's go ahead and move on to Council Bill one two zero three six six. This is the supplemental budget bill, and we do have a series of amendments. Want to thank Councilmember Peterson for flagging for us. He also intends to bring forward a amendment, a verbal amendment, just for the technical correction for the. The clarity for the record keeping on bridges and maintenance. So we will add that as amendment number four. And are confirming with the clerks and central staff that we have the appropriate language to make sure to move that forward. So at this point, let me just update my script real quick here because I want to make sure I. Keep the numbers in order. Apologies for this, folks. Okay, I think we're good to go. All right, so we have a number of amendments in front of us. Colleagues, the first amendment ought to Council Bill one two zero three. Six six is going to be brought by Council President Wares and myself. So in order to get the legislation in front of us, I'm going to move that the committee recommends passage of Council Bill one two zero three. Six six, which is the supplemental budget bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. It has been moved and seconded. The legislation is now in front of us. We will go ahead and consider amendments. And central staff, please jump in anytime as we're managing multiple screens here. But the first amendment that I'd like for us to get briefed on is amendment number one. This is from Council President Wares and myself. I move to amend Council Bill one two zero three six six as a presented in amendment number one.
Second.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Peterson. It's been moved and seconded to amend Council Bill one two zero three six six. Council Council President Wares is not available to join us today, and I do have some comments for her from her. Before I read those comments and add to the context of this amendment, I'll turn it over to central staff to walk us through the technical aspects. Of amendment number one, and thank you very much, Ally, for presenting the amendment table in front of us. And if folks from the Seattle Channel could. Put the same screen up that you have on the large screen, on the little screens in here, that would be appreciated as well. Go ahead, Ally, amendment number one.
Thank you, Chair Moskata. So as as you noted, amendment number one authored by Council President Wares, sponsored by Council Chair Moskata. This would add position authority for an analyst position in Council Central Staff. We have existing budget authority for this, but need a position. So this is budget neutral, but it would allow us to. Replace a central staffer who has left, but we ran out of open pockets.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And I'll just read my comments and see if there's any additional comments from folks. As Council President Wares is not able to join us today, here are some comments from her. The amendment adds position authority for an analyst position to the Council Central Staff Group. Central Staff has existing ongoing budget authority to fund this position, so there is no impact to the general fund. This amendment will align Central Staff's existing budget authority with their position authority, as Ally just noted. And I would also add, it's really important to make sure that our central staff has the adequate personnel positions needed. In order to fully staff Seattle City Council. They do tremendous work on behalf of all nine of us and an incredible amount of research. So the number of personnel here in the legislative department, for example, compared to the executive branch. Is much smaller and the amount of work that they have on their plate is is tremendous. So we really appreciate their work and want to add to their existing. Capacity. Any additional comments or questions? Please, Councilmember Nelson.
Well, thank you very much. I I agree that we that central staff. Performs an amazing, is an amazing resource, as these people learned last night answering my questions. But my my question is, it seems like, and this is more for Ally. It seems as though, and I'm new, remember that there are several people have left or a few people have left central staff, and so there are already vacancies. So are those in the process of getting filled in addition to creating a position?
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for the for the question. We have had a our our former staffer Jeff Sims has left. We're in the process of hiring a fiscal analyst position. And then would have a another analyst, so we don't have a position to sort of backfill for the homelessness. And in part, this is a reflection of changing the structure of central staff, where formerly it was a manager. Position, but we have more analyst needs right now. And so that's the need for this additional position. So we are in the process of hiring to both support the increased requests from council members related to the budget. So we'll be adding to our fiscal policy team as well as backfilling for Jeff Sims' departure. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for the clarifying question, Councilmember Nelson. Are there any additional comments or questions on amendment number one? Seeing none in person or online, council, excuse me, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on amendment number one? Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Moskata.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is four in favor and none opposed. Thank you very much. The motion carries and amendment number one is adopted to the supplemental budget bill. Amendment number two is in front of us. Councilmember Lewis, would you like to move amendment number two?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So moved.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lewis has moved amendment number two to Council Bill one two zero three six six. Councilmember Lewis, would you like to add to this before we turn it to central staff?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As was discussed in council briefing last last week, or it may have been two weeks ago. Councilmember Herbold and I made some comments to the effect that. The money that was allocated in the budget for triage one, or at least a portion of that money, could be reprogrammed as part of our ongoing work with. The executive to set up some kind of pilot for alternative nine-one-one response. It's evident triage one is not going to be a model that is pursued by by Mayor Harold's team. But certainly, that same amount of appropriation could form some kind of pilot program. That is more in line with the vision and goal of the Harold administration in this policy area. So what this amendment does, and I'm probably straying a little bit into central staff's territory of explaining the amendment. But this would move this money into finance general in order to preserve the opportunity to program it at some point this year. For some kind of alternative response, it may be that we pursue instead to do this through the budget. In which case, this triage one money could be essentially used as part of the balancing for for two thousand and twenty-two's. Final budget gap. But this preserves our options and flexibility to work with the Harold administration on putting together a pilot. To inform our ongoing work to meet the charter of public safety obligations of the city. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to central staff, and I may have a few comments after central staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Please, yes, go ahead and add to that, central staff.
Thank you, Chair Moskata. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. I don't have a lot to add. Councilmember Lewis covered it pretty thoroughly. But just to reiterate, these funds were originally provided to the Seattle Fire Department in the twenty twenty-two adopted budget. For the proposed triage one program that we now understand is not moving forward. This just reserves the funds for the same purpose generally as supporting an alternative response. But provides time and space for the council alongside the mayor to determine what the appropriate department and program is for those investments. I will just note that these funds were assumed to be part of the or were part of the assumptions going into the August discussions about. Anticipated carry forward into twenty twenty-three to help address the projected general fund budget. Moving them to finance general doesn't necessarily change that. It is a signal that this may be a priority for council. To invest these funds in twenty twenty-two, and then they would be available to spend in twenty twenty-three. However, if policy decisions are not made before the council's budget process this fall, those funds. Would be assumed to be part of the starting point for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, is there any additional comments? Please, Councilmember Nelson.
Do you know if we've spoken to the fire department about this? Do they, and I don't know how restricted or how. How limited the the definition of what those funds could be used for for triage one. But I do know that they that they are facing some staffing issues with nine-one-one response or whatever. So I'm just wanting to know if we've gotten the nod from the fire department.
Maybe I'll add to that, Councilmember Lewis, and then turn it to you for any additional context. You know, Councilmember Nelson, it's a good question, and it helps to bring up some of the issues that we faced prior to your arrival on this council. Recognizing that, I think, mid-year last year, Ben Jenny Dirk and Mayor Durkin sent down a package of items that. Were quite a surprise to a lot of people, including the fire department, including the frontline IFF twenty-seven members. And when I asked our friends at IFF twenty-seven about this triage one concept. Not to be confused with health one, not to be confused with the vans that we have expanded across the city in partnership with the fire department. This triage one concept was not very well stakeholder. And I think it was clear from my discussion with frontline personnel that they were really concerned about yet another. Van or another set of personnel that were expected to go out and triage with no place to send people. The words that we continue to hear was there needs to be a landing zone for people. And so triage one was not something that I think that had a tremendous amount of input from them to begin with. So I'm not trying to speak on their behalf, but I would echo the concerns that I heard from then back them back then, which is. A triage one completely new system being stood up is not a value add. Something like what Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Herbold, which has been stapled through quite a bit and has been discussed for now, you know, near three or four years. Is something that we all know is a value add and just needs resources. So I'm not trying to put words in their mouth, but just for context in terms of where some of those frontline personnel were at with the concept of a triage one. Proposal was not that that was their top priority. Councilmember Lewis, would you add anything to that?
Yes, so I mean, this money, I mean, this money, I think the best way to describe it happens to be in the fire department. You know, it's not money that the fire department was expecting to use for any other purpose. So no, that there's no concern that I'm aware of from the fire department in moving this money. The Durkin administration, when they conceived of this triage one idea in in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. Decided to put it in the fire department for for lack of them. Conceiving of a better potential place to develop the triage one pilot in twenty twenty-two. The Harold administration obviously had sort of a different concept of how they wanted to structure this work, which doesn't envision. As I understand it, the fire department being the vehicle to develop a an alternative nine-one-one response. So. There there isn't any programmatic issue with moving this. It's not going to impact the the bottom line or the the business model of the fire department in any. Way that I'm aware of.
But I would add, yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Lewis. And I would add, Councilmember Nelson, I think your concern around making sure that personnel within fire have the support they need. Is a huge priority of mine. Over the last two years, we've added additional support, both in terms of personnel. And mental health counseling resources and both at the Seattle Fire Department and within IFF twenty-seven. And I would also welcome central staff to add in if there's anything else that you'd like to feature within Seattle Fire Department in the supplemental. But I will tell you, that's going to be a big priority for me as well, this upcoming budget, to make sure that our frontline fire get the support, additional support they need. This is something that we have seen attrition in this area as well, and it hasn't got as much attention. So I'm going to be looking at this area as well. So with that, I know there will be more conversations to come about how to support our frontline fire personnel. And Councilmember Nelson, and then if there is anything else from central staff, you're welcome to join in.
Okay, so I it's it's clear that triage one was not ready for prime time, and so it makes sense to reappropriate that money. And I'm just hoping that the that the fire department and. Local twenty-seven would agree that this is a that this is fine, and they that these dollars aren't already being counted on for for those frontline workers.
That's well said. Anything else from central staff on this item? I'm seeing shaking of the head, no. So and I'm not seeing any additional comments on, oh, please go ahead, Councilmember Lewis.
I do have one last question for central staff. On my review of what was originally appropriated for triage one, it looks like the total number was one point nine million is what we put into the budget. Am I not remembering that correctly, or was some of that money already reappropriated or or moved? How do we get to the one point two number?
Councilmember Lewis, I don't have the all the spreadsheets in front of me, but I did confirm this with the analysts who staffs this area, that number. There was both a an initial proposed add, and then there was some reductions to that proposal in a separate amendment. And so you have to take both actions together that ultimately left one point two million dollar. But we will triple check that following committee, and if that was an error, we will. Make a technical correction in advance of the city council discussion on Tuesday.
Right. I would also just add for the future budget implications, I did have, this is just as an additional bit of context. For developing this over the course of the rest of the year. I did ask about a month ago for Greg Doss on Council Central Staff to prepare. A summary, a spreadsheet summary of what it might approximately cost to do a pilot along the lines. Uh, along the lines of, of what, you know, is envisioned for an alternative response. And that number came back at about nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, and it's possible that number could be driven far lower. Um, based on some of the assumptions that the Durkin administration made for the, um, triage one pilot in terms of, um. Uh, for example, that includes like a quarter million of that number is, is monthly rent, uh, based on where you based, uh, that program out of. And it's possible that, um, could be lower, taking advantage of, you know, existing city facilities or something of that nature. So. Uh, I did just want to flag that even though the number we're moving is one point two million, there could be a delta between what an actual, uh. Scoped pilot would run and that number. So, um. Uh, I just wanted to, to flag that additional bit of context, uh, from our central staff. I mean, with that, Madam Chair, I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you very much, councilmember Lewis. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the adoption of amendment number two?
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueda.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is four in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. Amendment number two carries and the amendment is adopted to the supplemental budget. We have an amendment number three in front of us. Um, as a sponsor of this bill, I did suggest to councilmember. Morales that I would bring it forward. Um, so I will be doing that as a courtesy to her. Um, but we, uh, we do have some concerns that we learned about late yesterday, so just want to flag that. Um, but, uh, on her behalf, because I don't see her. In the Zoom and want to make sure she's not in the waiting room. Okay. On behalf of councilmember Morales, I move to amend council bill one, two, zero, three, E, six, six, as presented in amendment number three. Okay.
Second.
Uh, okay, um, thank you very much. Uh, it has been moved and seconded. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to central staff. To address this and walk us through it, and then I'll walk through some of the comments that we have.
Great. Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Um, and just as an aside, apologies for taking my, uh, document on and off on the screen. I was trying to, um. Get councilmember Peterson's verbal amendment ready to show on, on the screen. So that is the, the reason. Reason it was going back and forth. Um, so this amendment authored by councilmember Morales would add seventy-five thousand dollars of general fund to the Human Services Department. To contract with an organization providing outreach services in support of the Chinatown International District and. The Little Saigon Neighborhood Safety Model. This would provide funding for the organization. To provide to FTE dedicated outreach staff for four months, September through December. Um, and would complement existing outreach activities. And this again would be funded to an outside organization who has indicated that these funds would be sufficient. To fund those positions, but we, um, I do not have details about the specificity of, of exactly the salaries or what those positions are. Um, we do have, uh, Amy Gore on the line, but I. Do not think she has those details either. And I'll just note that this proposed expenditure would use one-time two thousand and twenty-one ending balances from the general fund. That Tom described previously, um, that are assumed to be available otherwise to address the projected general fund shortfall in two thousand and twenty-three. And this is likely, um, typically when staff are funded, it becomes an ongoing obligation. Um, for the organization and requests for, to the city to fund it through the general fund. So I just flagged that in the. Sphere of the ongoing conversations this committee is engaged in regarding the, uh, position of the general fund that's projected going into two thousand and twenty-three.
And Ali, I think I'm, uh, I couldn't quite understand that lesson, so it's sort of like. Uh, trailed off a little bit. Uh, do you mind, do you mind saying that again? And I'll ask some of my questions in just a moment.
Sure, happy to, sorry. Um. The, so these funds use two thousand and twenty, this, this would be funded using the, what we are, are assuming as the, uh, carry forward. From the two thousand and twenty-one, uh, ending balances, so funds that came in, um. Uh, revenues that came in over projection as well as, uh, appropriations that were not expended last year. Uh, so what this would do is it would reduce the starting balance that we were assuming for two thousand and twenty-three. And it may also result in an ongoing request to provide funding to this organization for these two positions.
Okay, yes, councilmember Lewis has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I'm just trying to, to understand, um, exactly. What this. Um, what this would do in practice. I mean, it sort of reads. Like we'd be doing essentially an expansion to reach his outreach contract. I mean, it's worded in such a way to be, you know, to be neutral, obviously, but. Um, you know, independent of like a bid, but I guess I'm just kind of wondering exactly how, uh, this is going to, um. Be implemented. Would this money go to the King County Regional Homelessness Authority? Which I would imagine would hold this contract, or is it envisioned to be directly RFP'd by? The Human Services Department.
Thank you, councilmember Lewis. Um, I believe the intent is for this to be contracted from, with, directly from HSD to the organization. And this is more, um, in the, uh. Safe and Thrivings Community, uh, Division of. Uh, the Human Services Department versus the Addressing Homelessness, uh, Division that contracts with the King County Homelessness Authority. But I invite my colleague Amy to correct me if that assumption is, is not right.
No, I don't have anything to add. It's supporting, um, what's called the, um. The Chinatown International District and Little Saigon Neighborhood Safety Model Proposal. So it is, um, primarily thought of as a public safety investment, the whole program. And that was why, um, it was, um, this was written to send that funding to HSD for direct contact with the community.
You can have a follow-up, Madam. The description of the activities, um, seem to be the types of outreach activities. That we envision the homelessness authority contracting for. The description in the, um. Amendment bio reads, um, outreach activities would include harm reduction and non-sheltered survival support. Relationship building with unsheltered residents, de-escalation, crisis response and behavioral health outreach and connection to services. Um, so I guess I'm just curious. In terms of how it's crafted and where it's going, um, has the department kind of weighed in on whether. I, and you know, unfortunately, this is sort of, in reviewing the materials before this committee was the first time I've kind of, um. Seen this, a- and I can speak, uh. You know, certainly speak directly to the need in the Chinatown International District for this type of outreach. I think it's just a matter of. Thinking through exactly how to queue this up and, um, uh, get it out there. And I, so as the, has the Human Services Department kind of responded on, um. On how this is structured and. Is, does it sort of fit with what they, um. What, what they think their current line items of business and in homelessness outreach are.
Um, my understanding for the entire program is that it has been developed in coordination with, um. Representatives from city staff being present, present particularly like DON, um, SPU, SDOT. Um, and some other departments. I have not heard from HSD about this particular component of the, um. Entire program, um. And how they would, um, you know, in their kind of opinion about that. I haven't heard that from that, from them yet.
I, I would just add here that by, uh, proposing to appropriate the fund to the Supporting Safe Communities. Uh, budget summary level, it is a signal from the council that their intent is for this contract to be. Managed by the, um, Human Services Department rather than the, uh, homelessness authority. Uh, so ultimately, it is an administrative decision, um, that is the power of the executive. And if they decide to move forward with contracting for these funds and think the regional homelessness, homelessness authority is a more appropriate. Uh, path to move that forward, uh, they would either need to propose a change in a future supplemental budget bill. Um, or use, there is some flexibility that the budget director has to move funds between. BSLs, um, under a certain dollar amount if they have determined that is necessary.
Madam Chair, can I follow up?
Yes, please go ahead, councilmember Lewis.
Yeah, so, uh. I, I, I just want us to be really, really careful, um, programmatically with, uh, any potential redundancies. In how we are doing, I mean, it, it, this is a homelessness outreach program. I'm just gonna. Say that based on the description in the amendment. Um, and a very worthy one and one that we should be doing. And, and I'd like to work with the sponsor on. How we can queue this up as part of our partnership with the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Um, I, I don't know if the Supporting Safe Communities is the. Ideal place to put this, um. And, uh, you know, I, I want us to be careful about creating a, a redundant homelessness services bureaucracy within the city. So. I, I, um, I certainly want to increase outreach and support these efforts and these models, um, but I'd like us to. To have a conversation with the sponsor about how we might structure this to, to do that work through. What we've established as our future platform to, um. Pay for those services.
Councilmember Lewis, well said. Any additional comments? Councilwoman Nelson, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I will, I will be, um, voting against this amendment because, uh, for a couple of reasons. First of all, it doesn't seem to meet the criteria, um, or the test, uh, that items in the supplemental budget are, are there to meet. Needs assumed to be unforeseeable when the two thousand and twenty-two budget was adopted. And that's from the presentation earlier. Um, and councilmember Lewis's questions, um, indicate that we don't really have that much. Understanding of, of the design of this program. I had questions about whether or not seventy-five thousand dollars could be spent by the end of the year. Um, there are, but, um, there is also, uh, a lack of clarity about, is this, it, it does read like a. Um, like homelessness outreach, uh, which is definitely needed. And there are several neighborhood, um, organizations that do have a. Um, so for example, the U District Partnership, uh, Ballard, Soto, um, let's see. Uh, I believe there's one in, um, the CID, uh, and First Hill, or the CD and First Hill. Both share a homeless, uh, outreach coordinator. So I think that we need to be comprehensive or, um. Systematic in how we, uh, add this work to work that's already been done. Look at models that work and go forward. Probably next year with a more fleshed out, uh, program. If necessary. And I will say that on the safety front, um, coming out of my, um, meeting in the Economic Development, uh, Committee. The Business Improvement Area Representatives have been working with, uh, Andrew Meyerberg on, um. On the, uh, uh, neighborhood safety coordinators, uh, that would do some of the work that was identified as necessary. And so they've been continuing discussions. So, um, all very important work. Let's talk about it when we have an opportunity to really flesh out the details.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm not seeing any additional hands in the room or online. I will, um, I will be following the. Chair of Homelessness and, um, uh, uh, Public Assets here today as well. I do want to thank councilmember Morales. I know that her team has done a lot of work in the CID and with many community members that we work with. Frequently as well to talk about some of the highest needs. And, um, I do support this concept. I also support the concept that we heard about in. Public Safety, um, a few meetings ago with the hub and spoke model. I'm forgetting the name of it, but the various hubs around the city where. Councilmember Nelson noted some of the high need areas and appreciate that what the council members have said today is that. There is a need for this, but it does seem like the emphasis and the importance of doing this work should be in conjunction with what's the longer term funding process. I would hate for there to be a short time, um, impression that there would be funding with no actual action to get the dollars out the door. And, uh, you know, the next six month process, and then to not have this come to fruition in next year's budget. It does seem like this needs to be a broader conversation. Uh, in the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget, but also as councilmember Lewis appropriately noted. In conjunction with the Regional Homelessness Authority, recognizing the intersection between, um, folks who are living unsheltered and some of the work that. Our partners like, uh, Lead and Reach are trying to do with some really, um, high, high needs folks in the community. And so. Uh, in addition to needing to be consistent with the one-time funding concerns that I've had about other bills that have come before us and the. Value of that legislation, just like the value of this amendment, I am supportive of the concept, but I'm also concerned about the ongoing revenue needs. That, uh, we need to discuss in next year's bill without having a full funding source directly for this, um, fully fleshed out. I think that we will make sure that this is part of the larger conversation in this fall's, uh, process. And did emphasize my support for the concept with councilmember, um, Morales, and will continue to do so in. The upcoming budget for this fall and in partnership with community members who, um, have clearly articulated a need. And we need to make sure that it's actually funded regularly. So we will have more conversations about that this fall. Unfortunately, um. I will not be voting to support this today. The motion is in front of us, so councilmember. Excuse me, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on amendment number three?
Councilmember Peterson.
No.
Councilmember Nelson.
Nay.
Councilmember Lewis.
No.
Council Madam Chair Mosqueda.
No.
Madam Chair, that is four, four against, none for.
Okay, great. And, um, I'm sure four in support of the concept, so more will happen this later this fall, but the amendment does not carry. We have one more amendment in front of us. That's amendment number four. Councilmember Peterson, I understand you'd like to make a verbal amendment for us today. And I believe that central staff has this ready to pull up on the screen as well.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. And fortunately, our council rules do allow, uh, verbal amendments at committee, although it's. It's ideal to have them prepared in advance. So thank you for your grace in letting me bring this forward now. Colleagues, please don't bring these types of amendments to the Transportation Committee. Uh. Um, so this is basically a, um, just amending a sentence that's in the capital improvement program regarding. Bridge seismic programs, um, the current version that's before us is saying, just. Striking the sixteen bridges that were originally promised, but just to add a little clarity, um, I'll want to. Keep the sixteen in there, but then say it's been amended to eleven, just so the, the public sees the whole story that's, that's there. Was sixteen, it's now eleven. Um, so I'll go ahead and make this motion and then I'll restate the sentence. So it's, so it's clear. Is that okay if I go ahead and move it?
Um, yes, please go ahead and move the amendment.
Okay, I move to amend council bill one, two, zero, three, six, six, attachment A, Bridge Seismic Phase Three Page. Last sentence in the description paragraph. By deleting, uh, the first few words, deleting the sixteen, eleven bridges are, and replacing that with sixteen bridges were. And then I would strike the period after the word structure and add, but this was amended to eleven bridges. And that way, that sentence will then read sixteen bridges were part of the current phase of the program, which is funded by the levy to move Seattle. But this was amended to eleven bridges.
Councilmember Peterson has moved to amend. Attachment A to indicate sixteen bridges were part of the current phase of the program, which is funded by the levy to move Seattle. But this was amended to eleven bridges. I second that. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments? And you see it on the screen? I believe so. Thank you very much, central staff, for, uh, projecting that via Seattle channel. And no additional comments or questions. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on amendment number four, a verbal amendment?
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueda.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is four in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion carries and amendment number four, our verbal amendment is adopted. Colleagues, that means that we have the amended, uh, supplemental budget bill in front of us with amendment number one, two, and the verbal amendment number four. Would you, uh, like to make any additional comments, colleagues? And then I will thank central staff. Um, thank you very much, Tom, Mike, Sol, Ali, Panucci. Um, and for all of the work you've done to prepare us for today. Uh, thanks for the work at the city budgets office for helping. Work with us in a really transparent way. I want to thank Julie Dingman and her team for the transparency and collaboration, uh, this year has been extremely, um. Appreciated. And, uh, I'm looking forward to the upcoming fall budget, given the trajectory we had over the last seven months here. Want to thank my entire team who's reviewed the budget as well, our, our budget lead, uh, Cijal Porigas, Chief of Staff. Aaron House, um, and Fabielle Cuevas as well for all of the work that they've done on the budget. And with that, council colleagues, Madam Clerk, could you please call the role on the amended version of the supplemental budget, council bill one, two, zero, three, six, six?
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueda.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is four in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion carries and the committee recommendation that amended council bill one, two, zero, three, six, six. Be sent to the July twenty-six Seattle City Council meeting for a final vote. Again, councilmember Lewis, I don't know if you knew what you were signing up for when you said you'd be happy to read it. Been for me, but we now have four pieces that we're sending for next Tuesday. All right, let's move on. We have the last twenty minutes, excuse me, the last forty minutes, a little bit longer than we anticipated, actually. So thank you to everybody who has been waiting in the audience and online for this item on our agenda. We are at the Cannabis Equity Item, and I want to welcome the Mayor's Team for, and thank them for being here. And before we officially read them into the record, Madam Clerk, could you please read Item Number Five into the record?
Agenda Item Number Five, Cannabis Equity for Briefing and Discussion.
Wonderful. It's great to see some familiar faces, folks that had previously been with us on Floor Two, that are now with us on Floor Seven. Really appreciate you being here with us today. We have Dan Eater and Breonna Thomas of the Mayor's Office. And I want to thank you for the partnership that we have had with your team. Previously Gerald Hankerson and Devin O'Doyle. Yes, thank you. For all of the work that they did, they came and presented a few times before. And the topic is cannabis equity, as you heard some of the public comments this morning. And as you've heard the first either three or four meetings of our Finance and Housing Committee this year, we are very interested in moving forward some of the good research that's been done and partnership that's been done with Finance and Administrative Services, the folks at Office of Economic Development, the folks now with Office of Labor Standards and community partners to help really be living our commitment to undoing the harms caused by the war on drugs. And as discussed this morning in public comment, also undoing recent public policies that may have caused harm, especially to Black and Brown community members who've been trying to be part of this industry. And as we think about cannabis being a growing industry in Seattle, in Washington State, applying an equity lens and applying public policies to really make sure that we're addressing the past and recently past harms caused by the war on drugs and past public policies. So with that, we're excited that the Mayor's Office is here with us today to share some concepts. And I want to again reiterate that this is a concept presentation. We have a PowerPoint. There is no legislation introduced as of yet. But you've been working very hard with community members and within your departments to bring forward a set of recommendations that I think the council will be very interested in hearing about. And we'll have an opportunity, of course, to then hear more from stakeholders about some of these concepts. But this is a good, a good chance for us to daylight some of the good work that the Mayor's Office has done. So I want to thank you, Breonna Thomas and Dan Eater for being here, along with the community partners that we know you've been engaged with. But there is more work to be done, obviously, to stakeholder some of the discussion happening today. And today is an opportunity to feature some of the, the, the pillars of what could be legislation. So with that, I will turn it over to you.
Excellent. I guess we'll just start with introductions. I'm Dan Eater, Mayor's Office Policy Director, and I'm thrilled to be with you today. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Breonna Thomas. I am the Mayor's Office Labor Liaison and have been working in partnership on this legislation since my first day in this position. It is my ninetieth day, so I find it very fitting to be back before the council presenting to you today. And thank you, Councilmember Mosqueda, for those opening comments that really helped set the framework for how we got to the place that we are and where it is we think we're going with your help and your support. I did want to recognize also those comments from public comment earlier this morning about the deep impacts of policy that's been set here at the city level on members particularly of the Black community attempting to be to reclaim their space as part of the cannabis industry here in Seattle. And I'd like to double down on your thanks for the FAS team that's been doing a three-year racial equity toolkit in this space, speaking to community members frequently and in depth, building a bridge from the policies we set before to where it is we're going to go. Along with our partners at the state and the county. And of course, we are welcoming any help in this space from our federal delegation. With that, I will hand it back over to Dan.
Sorry, I just had to find the unmute button. So can you see the slideshow okay on your screens?
Yes.
Okay, great. Excellent. So as Breonna mentioned, the city conducted a racial equity toolkit that the Finance Committee has had a presentation on and heard about from some of the public comments at the beginning of this meeting. In broad brush brokes, in broad brush strokes, the racial equity toolkit concluded that there are significant inequities for BIPOC communities that were caused primarily by the war on drugs, a federal policy and series of programs at many governmental levels. We're here to discuss the first steps that the mayor is proposing to take to address some of those inequities. And we are proposing to begin with a suite of legislation that, as you mentioned, we will be transmitting on the twenty-seventh of this month. That legislation includes a job retention bill, a license, a series of licensing changes that we'll discuss both of those and also a, a step that memorializes the future actions that we intend to take as a city with assuming that we are on the same page as the council in the Mayor's Office.
It can't be overstated, the negative impacts of this federal, federal policy, the war on drugs on the Black community. We are, we're looking at families torn apart. We're looking at losses of intergenerational wealth. We are looking at deep rifts in the fabric of our community layered on top of displacement, layered on top of gentrification, layered on top of inequitable practices for workers across many industries, but particularly in the cannabis industry. It is important to keep in mind that there are limitations to what the city can do in this space. One of those things that we can do is work toward equity in licensing. We understand that the state has issued a series, an intention to issue a series of social equity licenses at the state level through the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board. And the city also has a hand in licensing every business that works in our fine town. And we will be taking a social equity approach to that licensure as well here at the city. We do know that the state licenses are primarily held by white men who are currently benefiting from the wealth building opportunities in this industry. We want to definitely recognize, as we heard in public comment, the deep impacts to the Black community and the transition from medical to to recreational cannabis and the folks that were left behind in that transition. Next slide, please, Dan. What the legislation is included, we've got three ordinances that'll be coming to you. The first one is a worker retention and transparency piece of legislation brought to us by the good folks over at the Office of Labor Standards and Central Staff. A bill brought to us by the Finance and Administrative Services that addresses the social equity license issued by the city. And keeping in mind that we do need to partner with the state and the county and the federal delegation, what next steps could look like for the city of Seattle? Next slide. OLS Worker Retention and Transparency. We were, it was brought to my attention that one of the big challenges in this industry is knowing who exactly the boss is and who to hold accountable for the labor standards that we already have on the books and making sure the folks are getting their wages in a timely manner and they're feeling safe in their workplaces. So we partnered with OLS and Central Staff to use language that we've seen before, not many surprises here. We're asking for posting a notification of who exactly holds the Seattle business license in each of these cannabis stores. So everyone who is an employee knows exactly who to hold accountable as an employer. And then we'll also be looking at a retention policy that may be familiar to many council members. You saw it when we worked on the suite of legislation to protect hotel workers around retention. Often, the Seattle business licenses move between owners. And during that transition, the stability of the workforce in the cannabis industry is meaningfully disrupted and there's quite a bit of turnover. So this legislation would also attempt to address the stability for workers in the workplace with a ninety-day retention with exemptions for cause. But that workforce, when the boss changes, the workers don't have to. And we want to make sure that they are stabilized during that economic transaction. And all of this can be enforced by a private right of action and through the Office of Labor Standards, who has made it clear they are prepared to help us enforce this body of work.
Okay. The second piece of legislation in the suite of bills is a proposal to create a new social equity applicant category of Seattle cannabis licenses. And this is consistent with the racial equity toolkit recommendations. The social equity applicant definition is going to be provided, and I can give a summary of that. The bill will indicate that it must be a, a business that has majority ownership by owners living in an area that is disproportionately, that has been disproportionately impacted by the federal war on drugs. Ownership by a one or more persons who have been convicted of a drug offense and/or other considerations to be fleshed out in future directors' rules informed by the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board's deliberations about a state-level social equity applicant procedure. The the bill that will be transmitted next week would also increase the, I'm sorry, before I finish with the social equity applicants, those who qualify for social equity applicant definitions would have a no-cost city license. The other applicants or other license holders who are seeking an annual city cannabis license would pay four thousand dollars in lieu of the current three, three thousand five hundred dollar fee. So there would be a five hundred dollar increase. And the, the final item in this bill is that ancillary businesses, if approved by the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board, would be eligible for receiving a city license. And the details on such a program of potential ancillary cannabis businesses is to be determined by the state. And then we would, we would have a lot more discussion about citing and other considerations. Ancillary cannabis businesses, as just a, one example, could include consumption lounges. And, and that's why we would want to have a whole lot more discussion about where, where such an ancillary business could be located, who could own it, how is it connected with, or is it not connected with license holder in, in the retail space? Finally, there is, we're just acknowledging that this is the beginning steps of multiple steps that the city intends to take. And we want to memorialize the, the the future steps that we know that we want to take in the nearer term. And that includes partnering with King County and other jurisdictions to allow expunging prior cannabis convictions. That's something that the city cannot do for other jurisdictions by itself, but we can, we can advocate for and partner with other jurisdictions. We intend to work with BIPOC and other impacted communities on approaches to build wealth through management jobs and ownership of cannabis businesses in the industry. And again, acknowledging that this is, this is a series of first steps and there's more work to do. One of the things that we have been planning on and expect to do in, in the coming months is to stand up an advisory committee of workers and industry members and community members who have been impacted by the federal war on drugs. And they will help us scope and receive and make, give advice about next steps on a needs assessment that will help us identify the highest, the highest needs of workers and, and recommendations for addressing those needs.
And just for the listening public, you will be able to see this legislation, hopefully. If everything goes well, we will transmit it from the Mayor's Office next Wednesday, July twenty-seven. And if my council calendar math holds, you should be able to see that on the introduction or furlough calendar the following Monday. We are working with Councilmember Mosqueda. Thank you so much for time in committee to keep this bill moving. Dan and I are intimately familiar with the pressures that are the budget cycle, so we don't want to step on those toes. And so we are prepared to be available to answer any of your questions. I'll be reaching out tomorrow to each of your offices to offer you a briefing on the full suite of legislation to make sure that we are on the same page and everybody's got the information that they need to make good decisions on this suite of bills. And with that, if there are any questions that we can attempt to answer today from a high level, this would be the time.
Thank you very much, Breonna, and thank you very much, Dan. You stole my pens. Thank you for the presentation on a high level, and we look forward to hearing more from you as you craft the final legislation. And then we can have a fully baked suite of proposals in front of us for our consideration. Is there any additional comments or questions? Okay, Councilmember Nelson. And again, just wanted to reiterate that this is an initial briefing, high-level concepts, the actual content of legislation, or the legislative suite of items is still being finalized, it sounds like. So want to make sure that folks know we are not, we are not with the final legislation in front of us, but happy to take high-level questions and comments. Please go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you very much. I look forward to learning more. I'm all about not reinventing the wheel. So it seems as though this is building on the work that's already been done by FAS in, in collaboration with OED, SDCI, and OCR in stakeholders. So that is great. I'm hoping that this will also take into account the information that was provided in the twenty nineteen, let's see, Cannabis Equity Survey and Analysis. All of that said, and also I appreciate that the Mayor's Office has been reaching out to, to the existing community and, and the retailers themselves. So one question, maybe you'll be able to answer it now, is is this, do you anticipate a reprogramming of the city allocation of the state excise tax dollars that, in parenthetical note, the highest in the nation at thirty-seven percent? But will those dollars be used to support any of this work?
I thank you for that question, Councilmember. At this time, it is not our intention to repurpose those dollars for this suite of legislation. This is again, a first step toward a larger body of work. And so while I appreciate that there have been recommendations from our many stakeholders to repurpose those dollars, that is not our current intention.
Okay. Thank you. So the cannabis industry is already highly regulated and taxed, while also subject to unique barriers like no access to capital, no normal banking, no tax deductions for federal income. So it's vulnerable to competition from the illicit marketplace. And I, I just hope that the that the forthcoming regulations will be well, really well thought out so as not to, not to cause any major difficulties to our small businesses that are operating in this space. So thank you very much. I look forward to this. And when you said, when you were talking about ancillary businesses, I, I look forward to that because I know that that's been called for. Are there any anticipated changes to the regulations around buffers that could actually increase the number of licenses available for equity ownership?
That would be a separate conversation, Councilmember Nelson. Right, right now, the, the FAS legislation is a, an acknowledgement that the state could be issuing additional types of cannabis license. And it, it expands the, the, the code section to effectively anticipate that we would consider issuing such licenses for people doing business within the city if the state makes such a decision. But it doesn't get specific about which types of new businesses, where they'd be located, or any other kind of details, not at this stage.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Are there any additional comments?
Okay, I think that there will be more opportunity for discussion and I, and I've received some of the contact information from the folks in the audience. I'm going to be following up as well. But with that, I don't see any additional comments in front of us from the council members. And I want to thank Dan and Breonna for the work that you have done. And in partnership, it sounds like with Community Conversation, still, still ongoing. So we look forward to that further feedback. And the concept here would be to And the concept here would be to get additional feedback. As Breonna noted, if there's legislation that's transmitted down, it would then appear on the introduction and referral calendar that first week of August. And colleagues, we would then have an opportunity to look at the legislation and consider any possible issues for identification on August 11th. So we have quite a few weeks here, three or four weeks. I should say three weeks between now and August 11th at 9:30 a.m. And at 9:30 on August 11th, we'll also have three bills from the Aquarium. The DEMPAC, which is the Debt Management Policy Advisory Committee this morning, did agree to send down a suite of bills for the council's consideration to further support the construction and the, the finalization of the aquarium, given some slowdowns in its fundraising and its experience. Colleagues, we will have additional information from Central Staff with the clear sideboards that have been requested to make sure that folks understand why this project is unique. Those, those, that legislation will be in front of us on the 11th, as well as this Economic Resilience Plan presentation from the Office of Economic Development. And, and in conjunction with Councilmember Nelson, that would allow for us to then lift the proviso so that the economic resilience pieces of Jump Start could move forward. And as noted, the cannabis equity piece then would be our largest item on the agenda. If there's no objection, today's meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your presentation and your participation today. And to Dan and Breonna who are with us, thank you again for being here to present the summary, and we will see you on the 11th. Take care.